Okay, good morning and welcome to the Reno County Commission Meeting for December 27th. I'll call the meeting to order. The second item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance and a prayer by Pastor Steve Gill from Turon Community Church. He's via phone this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Steve?
Okay. Let us pray. Father God, I thank you for this day you've given us. And Lord, today I pray that you would give guidance and wisdom to all those in attendance today in their discussions and in making their decisions, Lord. Also, I ask that you would bless them for their public service. Lord, it's a world where people just don't seem to care anymore, so we really appreciate those who have stepped up and answered the call to serve others. Father God, again, we just thank you for this day. Be with us all gathered. We commit this day and this meeting to you and to your glory. And I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Have a good day. Okay, is there anyone here for public comment? Items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Additions to the agenda? We're gonna make one addition, do a quick executive session for five minutes right after this, so before the consent agenda. Are there any other items? No. Hearing none. Patrick, I might just have you read the motion for the executive session.
A motion to, from the Board, to enter executive session until nine... Well, ten? It always takes two minutes longer than the other way. Nine, twelve. With the county council, the subject matter of the county employee performance and justification, the executive session is to discuss personal matters and non-legal persons.
And who's gonna be there? Okay, got it. ISO moves, there a second? Second by Commissioner Parks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion passed at five zero. Okay, we'll take about a five-minute executive session and... Okay. Welcome back. We're out of executive session. Item six is a consent agenda. Lot of housekeeping on there.
I would move to approve the consent agenda. Item six A through six Q as presented by staff with the appropriate resolution numbers to coincide with the resolution.
Okay. So, motion by Commissioner Hurst. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bogner. Discussion. I think we've got one item.
So, I would like the Board to consider... What section is that? Four B, changing that from sixty days to ninety days.
Four? Am I looking at the wrong one? Oh. Let's reference the consent agenda item and then the contract.
Which consent agenda item is that?
Six Q.
Six Q.
Okay, so, Mr. Whitesel, you're for discussion here.
I can change that if it's okay with the committee to go through item six P if you want to bring that six Q out.
Okay. Well, why don't you explain your suggestion?
Okay, so, we talked about extending Randy's contract for two years, because I think all of us think he does an excellent job. And as, you know, providing that security, I think the... Or at least, I would like, you know, a little bit of concession on your part as well, so that way, if you want to leave, you know, give us a little bit longer notice.
So, your proposal is changing item B on page two of the contract to ninety days instead of sixty days?
Correct.
So, that's a discussion item. There's a motion and a second.
Yes, I would motion to change that from sixty days to ninety days and accept the consent agenda with that revision.
Okay, there's a motion to amend. Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Is there a second? Okay, there's a... Hearing no second, I think that amendment motion fails. Any other discussion?
Randy, I want to make it harder for you to leave.
Make him have a year before he can get out.
All right, before we get too cute, we'll roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitesel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes, okay. Good discussion, appreciate it. Motion passes five to zero. Item seven, seven A is an insurance option for the county. Bob Fees here from Fee Insurance. Randy, do you have anything, or you just want to kick it over to Bob?
Really, just give it to Bob, but this was in response to some questions when he was here in November about the 2024 insurance policy. This is a buy-down and irrelevant options.
There we go. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Fees, with Fee Insurance Group. Appreciate being here. Wanted to really just kind of explain how buy-down insurance works, why we proposed it, and then make sure you understand it before we move forward without it. You currently have a 2% deductible on all the buildings. And what we do every year, working with the administrative staff, is come up with a listing of every building and the values of the building and the property inside the building. And this year, the total value of that is $101,890,863. So, in a worst-case scenario, and really you have to be thinking that way, Joplin, Greensburg, a really bad event, your deductible would be $1,008,000. That would be the deductible for the county. So, what we've done, and we have to go through basically Lloyds of London to come up with a buy-down policy, we take that $1,008,000 and we buy that down to $200,000. So, the maximum loss you would incur would be $200,000. And that premium is $169,000 plus taxes and fees. And so, that was, I think, provided to everybody. And, okay. So, I did just want to make sure you understood the risk. We went without it last year. It's a gamble. When I was here before, I had taken the top four buildings only, property of the buildings, and you could, I mean, just a hailstorm, and you could have a sizable deductible that you would be responsible for. This buy-down would also, I mean, that applies to that as well. It's wind and hail. Any wind and hail event, which is that separate deductible, would be bought down to $200,000 on a per occurrence basis, so it's not capped at one time. It's on a per occurrence basis. And I just wanted to point that out to you all, so that you understood the risk that you've got. Secondly, Commissioner Whitesel, you had asked about umbrella coverage, and we cannot get a firm quote from travelers until after they've inspected the jail, which we expect it to be that. That'll happen in early January. But they cannot go any higher than $3 million. And right now, their estimated cost is between $15,000 and $20,000 per million dollars of coverage. Your biggest risk being that law enforcement liability. So, that's why they wanted to inspect the jail and have a good idea of what they're underwriting.
One point of clarity. So, you said 2%, but then you said a million dollar, or yeah, one point, you know, $1 million or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't it be like two... I see a figure of 180, 1.8 million?
That's the buy, that's the 2%
Okay.
Of $101 million in total insured value. That's why this, these things are always complicated.
Yeah, no, no, I just, well, you'd said 2%, but then the figure you gave, I thought, was 1%. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, it's 2% of $101 million.
Which would be two...
A million eight.
Yeah, a million eight, okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Because I don't think that's what you said. I think you just had a slip of the tongue.
Okay.
You have each building appraised with a value.
Not appraised, we have a value on it.
A value set on it, okay.
Yes.
But maximum payable is 1.8% per occurrence. Now...
Maximum deductible is 1.8 million.
So, does, if a building, if two buildings get hit by hail, does that accumulate towards that deductible?
So, that deductible's not $1,008,000. So, it's 2%. So, if you have, let's just say, the law enforcement building gets hail, that's $11 million is the value of that building. 2% of $11 million is...
210,000.
What, 1% is 100,000? And it's a $200,000 minimum deductible. So, your deductible, or was it $100,000 minimum? Now, I don't remember.
200.
Yeah, 200. So, your deductible for that building is gonna be the 200, and this buy-down would not apply unless you had five or six buildings with that same hailstorm get hit. Then they just combine all those values of the damaged property and take 2% times that value to come up with your deductible.
And it's per occurrence.
Per occurrence.
So, if you get hit once in the spring and once in the summer, that's 200 and 200,000, twice.
Correct. That's correct.
Am I correct in assuming the buy-down was the first green? That was the cost to buy it down?
Yes.
180?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner had a question.
So, if we sneak by for ten years, where to wash?
That's correct.
And of course, apparently, in the last ten years, we haven't had a problem. But that doesn't mean tomorrow won't be the day.
Correct.
But, as a young associate of mine always says, I don't work for today, I work for the average. Meaning that in selling commodities or whatever we're doing, you work for the, what's best in the average. So, I'm not so sure the decision last year wasn't a pretty good decision. Just let it ride.
Well, and we're talking about a catastrophic event here, too, and we wouldn't necessarily have to rebuild all the buildings.
And there's also potential of federal funding for extreme events like that.
Correct. Like Greensburg, Joplin, both, yes. I just wanted, I thought it was important that you understood the actual risk with that 2% wind and hail deductible, so that...
Yeah, no, I really appreciate it.
We don't get flat-footed and not have something in front of you.
The plus and the minus for a government agency is that, unlike a private agency, we can raise the funds if we have to. You know, it's not gonna be fun for the taxpayers, but if we need to raise another $2 million in such event, we have the power to do that. So...
Right, like I said, we...
Go ahead. No, I was just gonna say, I don't understand these things very well. They're complicated. I hate making insurance decisions because they're just complicated, and there's always... I mean, you're running a business, and you're here to sell something. If we ask for it, and that's fair, so it's up to us to make the decision on whether it's appropriate or not, but...
Yeah, no, this is a good information to have, and I really appreciate you presenting it. I just don't think it makes sense financially for us, because like I said, we wouldn't have to necessarily rebuild all of the buildings. You know, we could not build, you know, a million dollars worth of buildings, or, you know, put it off, or, you know. And so, I just don't think it makes financial sense, the risk versus the reward.
Well, the very fact that you can still write liabilities on this is something, there's a lot of corporations not getting that right now. And you've seen that, I'm sure, too, Bob.
Correct.
Got a lot of them. I happen to work for one that they didn't want to assume the liabilities for wind and hail anymore.
That's correct.
A lot of the Midwest is seeing that because of the wind and hail, so...
And I want to... I want to commend you. You all have a roof replacement program, have had for a number of years in place, so your roofs are all in relatively good shape, and you keep them up to date, and that doesn't happen everywhere. And so, that is also a huge barrier when you have a hailstorm. The newer the roof, the more willing it is to withstand the hailstorm, and that's the biggest propensity of loss that we have here, that, and wind, obviously, but...
Do you have anything, Commissioner Hurst?
I appreciate the information. I don't, I don't know that I'm willing to spend $180,000 on something that may or may not happen. I'm just, if it happens, we wish we had it. If it doesn't, we wish...
We didn't.
But I think we'll let it ride, as far as I'm concerned right now.
Well, unless there's a motion, which it doesn't sound like there is, I'll thank Bob and his team for putting this together. Appreciate your work here, and thanks for presenting it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, 7B is a, a resolution to change the county sewer districts, uh, 3 and 10, billing procedure. This is kind of a technical point. Um, Randy or Don?
Um, I'll let Don answer questions if you have any. But this is, when the budget was made for 24, you got rid of tax levies for utility funds. And so now we need a resolution to be able to put a monthly fee, a user fee to this sewer, uh, this district. Um, the other wastewater, um, districts, I think, already have that in place, and we're with the consent agenda, may have changed their amounts over time. But this is to start the process for 2024 to have utility bills, user fees, instead of on the tax assessment.
Makes sense. Any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Did you have a resolution number? Are you?
Yes.
Okay.
It's 2023-54.
54? Is there a motion to approve? Resolution 54?
Uh, motion to approve resolution 54. Change the billing of the sewer districts 3 and 10.
Commissioner Parks moves. There a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hurst. Any other discussion? Hearing non-roll call?
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner White soul?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, item 7C. Um, you know, sometimes, uh, these appointments land on the consent agenda occasionally. Uh, in this case, um, you know, I think I felt it appropriate to bring it to the full commission to have a, a little bit of a conversation. I think both appointments, um, Don's here and can speak for both. Uh, they're renewals on both, and, and I think he's, uh, they have his recommendation. Um, it's a tough thing because, I mean, and the reason I'm bringing it on a, on a business item is, on one side, you have people that have really dedicated their time and have proven, you know, they, they add value to the commission. On the other side, it's like, when do you, you know, um, uh, kind of change the makeup a little bit? Because you don't have the same, um, situation like with us. We, you know, the people change our seats out from time to time, and they have that opportunity. But it's our obligation, I think, to make that decision. So I just wanted to, uh, I'm not advocating for, um, something against the recommendation, but I thought it was appropriate to at least bring up that, hey, if the commission wants, um, some, some new voices on the planning commission, it would have to, uh, um, state that, and we would have to make it a decision outside of the recommendation. So I'll open it up for discussion if there is any or a motion to approve. Don, do you want to?
I'd like to have Don just come explain to us the reason for continuing to appoint these folks. And I know we've talked, and I thought it was a great explanation, very insightful for me. The reason to retain some and not just replace, because it's a
Okay. Don Britton, Director of Reno County Public Works. Uh, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, you're allowed three, three-year terms. So nine years is your limit. And on that commission, now we have three people that, uh, have a year. So we have a lot of new people. On the, uh, two people, there's not an actual opening, as if somebody's termed out or decided not to run again. These two individuals want to rerun again, be reappointed again. Russ Gertsen, he's been there six years now, so he has one more term left. He's the chair. So he has a lot of experience. Jack Martin has just finished his first term. And I, it takes, I think it takes a three-year term before you start really understanding it and, and comfortable in the decisions that you make. And so that's why I recommend these two, because they do a very good job, and, uh, there's not any issues with them. And they're, they both want to serve another term.
Thank you, Don.
In the commission, I forgive me, I, I completely misread this agenda item. I thought we were going to be talking to, um, 13 applicants, and apparently that is not the case.
I, uh, I appreciate the fact that we have several, many qualified, uh, what I would consider qualified applicants, uh, that have applied for this. Uh, I think that I would agree to put Russ and Jack back on the, on this because, several reasons, but primary reason is because they are smack dab in the middle of working on the regulations for solar, and have that experience and knowledge that they have researched this and have all this information sent to them already. Uh, and I don't think it would be very smart to change those positions right now until they get that, uh, process done with and presented to us, uh, the commission. Uh, I don't think it's fair of, of, of us to send somebody in to that position that has no knowledge of what's been discussed and put on before. It puts them a little behind the ball. Not that they couldn't catch up, but it would take a while. And, uh, so, and I, I know from past experiences that, that Russ, the chairman, has been through the wind and us going through the solar. And I think that makes really good sense, uh, uh, to have his leadership on there, because he's under, he's been through it. And, uh, Jack is, I agree, it's just kind of like coming on the county commission. It takes a while for us to get adjusted and understand how things work. And I think that's the same way with the, uh, uh, planning commission. If I was going to do anything, I might look at discussion on having, uh, instead of three, three-year terms, I might look at having something similar as to two, three-year terms or something like that. But, uh, I know that, uh, you're just getting acclimated, uh, uh, the first term, and that gives you another term. And, and, uh, I would, I would look at something similar to that rather than making a, a, a change in the, in the, in the makeup of the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission at this point in time.
Well, and I, and I would say, without talking to the, the rest of the applicants, you know, do we know that they haven't been following and reading? I mean, until we talk to them, we don't know. We're just making an assumption that none of the others have, have been keeping up with the solar and, and, uh, and stuff. And so, yeah, I mean, they might not be the ones voting on it, but that doesn't mean they're not watching the meetings. And, I mean, I'm sure some of them specifically applied for this for that reason. So I would just say that, that, I mean, it makes sense, except for we don't know without talking to them. I, I really think we should talk to people before we appoint them. I mean, but I've, I've, I've said that all along. I've been very consistent on that.
If the only reason they want to be on the, on the Planning and Zoning Commission is for a one reason only, then that's not a good idea.
Which is why we should talk to them.
It's not a good idea. They need to be looking at the whole reason to be on a planning commission, planning and zoning.
Which is why we should talk to people, because we don't know.
We've got a resume, and, and that's sufficient.
I, um, th- this is the path of least resistance. I don't always necessarily follow that path. It's, it, um, I, I know I would probably not be in favor of, um, replacing, I mean, these, this is the leadership team on, on the board. So replacing both, um, would probably be a bad idea. Um, and I don't have anything against either one of these, uh, applicants. And, and, you know, obviously, they, I, I don't know why people want to be on that commission. I mean, it's, um, I mean, it's almost worse than our job, because they do all the work, and then they don't even get to make the decision. So, um, I think there's something to be said about people that have been in it and are willing to stay in it. Um, I, and so I, like, I'm kind of leaning towards just not rocking the boat. Um, if these were, um, non-leadership positions. I, I do, I do think, um, there's a bit of a mismatch, um, with the planning commission and us, for whatever reason. There, there, there is stuff that comes to us, and it's just, we continue to meddle. And I don't know if it's our fault, or if we're not giving good direction back to the planning commission, or if they're not picking up on, you know, what, what our vision. Um, and so, you know, maybe, Don, I, I think, if anything, if we keep leadership in place here, it's just like, I would ask that they continue to ask questions and make sure staff gives the right feedback to where we're not, you know, this happened in wind, it happened again in solar, where, you know, you guys do a lot of work, you bring it here, and we're like, mess the table up and send it back to you. So, um, I don't, rambling now, but Commissioner Parks, did you have something to add to that?
Yep. I'm gonna just jump out there and say, I think we ought to make a motion to appoint these two gentlemen. Keep them in place. Um, I know that there was some quality people that had applied to that. I, I personally know at least one of them. Um, but I think, given the situation, and given the situation, we have oversight in these major issues, I don't think anything is going to go awry. So I certainly, that's my motion, is to continue retaining him for another three-year term on a planning commission.
Okay. Is that a motion, right?
That's a motion.
Motion to approve, uh, item 7
Yep, 7C.
C as, as recommended. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hurst. Um, any final discussion?
I'd like to clarify my vote, that it's nothing against these two gentlemen. I just think we ought to talk to people before, talk to all the applicants before we appoint people. So that, that'll be the reason for my vote.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner White soul?
No.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Motion passes 4 to 1. Okay, um, item 7D, uh, we, we talked about it briefly uh, in a past, uh, meeting. Um, and there's been some ongoing, um, uh, conversation around the, around the country related to this topic. Um, Patrick, you, uh, provided a little bit of information last time. I don't, if you wouldn't mind just, um, briefing us again on, you know, the topic and what we're doing and what our powers are here.
Yeah, just another brief briefing. Um, this was a topic of conversation at the KAC meeting at some of the, uh, several counties in Kansas have done a declaratory resolution, uh, expressing concern or being against, uh, the, what's been called the 30 by 30 program. Basically, the concept is that county government's concerned about involuntary conservation efforts. And so I've drafted a resolution, uh, for consideration that would direct the federal government not to involuntarily impress conservation efforts on landowners. I also added, uh, a statement with that same concern regarding historical trails, because that's something that may be of interest locally. Um, the U.S. Department of Interior has in its charter, it's, it's, one of its requirements is to take under consideration local government input. And so if something like this is passed, it gets, we would send it to the Department of Interior, and they would compile it, most likely. Obviously, it's a federal program, so this local government has very limited power to impress upon the federal government, but they are supposed to listen to our voice. And so if you guys are concerned about this kind of program, this is your opportunity to be heard.
Okay. Discussion? Commissioner Bogner?
Well, I've been following this issue for quite a while. And, uh, uh, I think it is a legitimate issue. I've, I've got friends in other states where, uh, the government has gradually started buying up properties, and local people run out of money far, far before our federal government does. They expand their national parks, they do various other things. And, uh, uh, they would probably come off with a pretty light touch in the beginning. But once they accumulate enough land, then things change. Uh, if, I've been following Trent loose a little bit. He has a radio show, and he's a columnist, and, and he's pointed out several, what I would consider overreaches by the federal government. And that's why I'd be interested in, in, I know, alls we're doing here, we have no vote. But people who are concerned in fighting a certain project can actually go to the people funding it and say, not everybody's in favor of this. You need to look at this closer. And that's essentially what we're doing, is giving them a little leverage to get their voice heard. And that's about all this does, and, and all we're able to do. I would be in favor of giving people a voice, or at least a document that says, you need to look at this. And that's essentially what we're doing, is giving our consent to, to, uh, for them to use this document to say that not everybody's in favor of this particular project.
I, uh, thank Patrick for doing such a good job with this. I thought, very well pointed out, and it's, it's time. But other counties are interested. I know McPherson County wants to see what we, if we pass this, uh, they want to see what we've done. And other counties, it's, it's, so, it's time that, uh, we at least have an opportunity to make our thoughts known.
Mr. White soul?
Nope.
Commissioner Bogner?
Well, I, Ron has made a point. Several of our Quad County counterparts have mentioned this in the last two meetings, at least, that we've gone to, and, and think we need to act in this area, you know, with something. Uh, it's, because some of them would even be, uh, have a better chance of having, well, I don't want to call it a problem, but having something come up in, in, in their, in their counties, and, and they're very concerned about it. And they're hoping that this could turn into kind of a regional consensus that we darn sure don't want anybody forced into anything.
Well, I too appreciate, um, county councilor's work on this. And, uh, it came together nicely. It wasn't, um, you know, it was very professional and, and I think forward and, and not, um, I mean, it just makes sense. It's not, uh, overblown, I would say. It's not, it's not too political. It's just, um, a statement here that makes a lot of sense, I think, for our residents. And, and I, it made more sense to me after he explained how, you know, if this were to actually become a thing, um, consultation with, with local authorities would be important, and us establishing the line in the sand early is, uh, makes a lot of sense. So, um, anything else before we, um, take, before we take a motion?
Ready for a motion. I would move that we, the Reno County Commission, approve the declaratory resolution opposing the federal government's 30 by 30 land preservation goal.
This is a motion by Commissioner Hurst. Second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bogner. Um, discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner White soul?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Okay. Moving right along. Um, 8A is the monthly reports. Randy?
Okay, in front of you, in the pack is monthly reports from the district attorney, human resources, information technology, maintenance, public work, solid waste, the treasurer, and youth services. Any questions on anything in their reports? public works, solid waste, treasurer, and youth services. Any questions on anything in their reports? Okay. The next item is the financial report, and just as it says on here, this is through November, there are still two months of 2023 budget, budget numbers that will be affected, so we have the month of December and then the thirteenth month for things that still haven't hit yet, that we're, we ordered, but the bill hasn't been processed, so there still are two months left in billing, but things are looking really good in most of the funds. Right now, the general fund is in really good shape. Revenues are well above what we budgeted for various reasons, interest rates, sales tax collections are up, so, and I think we've got a very large percentage of our property tax collected, so.
And just, that number is accurate, we made three point five million dollars on interest this year?
Yes.
That's impressive. It almost feels like we have too much cash.
It, it, yeah, we weren't, when we did the budget, we, you know, with interest rates, not knowing where they were going, so we are more conservative with that number because for so long, we're at one percent or, or, or less, so now we're getting that four percent, whatever it is that Brenda, she shuffles the money around to different CDs and the municipal investment pool, that's, we're doing good there.
I, I know it's a little off-topic, but, um, there's kind of a growing conversation, it's not quite a concern yet, related to, um, allocation of cash with, you know, only one bank, and FDIC rules that limit insurance to about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Does, does the state, county, um, have that same risk that other depositors have? I mean, there's been situations in the last couple of years where banks have failed, and depositors with more than two hundred fifty thousand dollars have been at risk, that they've so far gotten bailed out, but government does not have to do that?
There, I know that, yeah, I haven't, I haven't researched the issue, so I don't want to shoot off, but I think that most pla- I think spreading it around is something a lot of counties do. Randy, do you have experience with that? I mean, I think, yeah, I think it'd be concerning.
Yeah, and we do have our money, and I think we may have access to most banks in Reno County, and then with the state further investment pool that they have, so we don't have it all in just one location or in one account, and like-
Like, how many?
I would have to check.
Three?
Banks? I think we, I don't know, Cindy, do you? I didn't know if you guys knew.
Um, I think we may have more than three.
Well, I think-
I, I, idle funds, I mean, the state, we have, we have requirements that we have with our idle funds, the, the investments you can put them in are limited, for one thing, and then we have to account for them, and, wait, wait, Randy, I think it's confusing, just because we have the spreadsheet, doesn't mean that all the money is in one account, right, like, yeah, so.
No, I, I understand that, I just, there, there's been some predictions that next year's going to be tough on some, uh, regional and smaller banks, um, because of kind of impending commercial loans that are coming due and high interest rates and the inability for them to pay, and that quickly, like, if you go back about twelve months, it, like, it was able to kind of be stopped, but it can quickly spiral into disaster for the banking industry.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're not, of course, you're right, uh, there was a bank in southwest Kansas that failed, and we actually, the county had a smaller CD at that bank, but it got fully, it would, because between the insurance and the new institution that took it over, all we had to do was transfer it, so those things happen, and for the most, I mean, and so far, every time it's happened where there was a bank failure or our deposit was insured, or the, and/or the bank that took it over made us rot full, so, I mean, it's, it, things are in place, but it could happen again.
And, and we, we have a, and it's, I guess it's called CDARS, C-D-A-R-S program. I'm looking, Leslie is watching, so she sent me a text, so, thank you, Leslie, that it's spread around the country, but counts as local FDIC, state authorized, and that we're, she's saying we are totally safe with our money, we have spread it around, and we're, we're not going to be in trouble like, like some of the businesses from the west coast on that issue last year, or earlier this year.
Almost, almost got you there. Um, if you wouldn't mind just having that put in writing and just put it in our next packet, um, that'd be awesome. Commissioner Bogner has a question?
That was the point I was going to bring up, most banking institutions have gone to this Cedars program for large investors to where they don't want to be caught any worse than anybody else, so they switch CDs with other banking institutions throughout the United States to protect the, the individuals so they don't go over. I, I knew it's being done individually. I didn't know if it was being done on the county level, and that was going to be my question, and it got answered before I got to speak, so, so I, I, I'm glad to see it, because it, it is a concern.
Keep going, thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, general fund's in good shape, this doesn't have all the transfers, year-end transfers for all the funds, which will be based on, you know, budgeted transfers and then what projects, capital projects, or things that we didn't get completed this year and will need it for next year, put it into the reserve funds. Any questions on the financials? Other item I have is, I was just going to mention, and it'll be in, your business items are presented at the, at the next meeting, but for the Yoder Water District, we need a grant, a loan administrator, administration. I think it was in October, I sent out a request to Ransom Financial, who's doing the Yoder-
Yoder Habit Project, they're already working on that, we, they signed a contract a couple of years ago. I sent it to Ransom, and then I also sent it to SCED, didn't hear back from SCED, Ransom came back with a proposal, they would take care of loan, or the loan and grant, we do have a grant for six hundred thousand on this project, so we will need someone that's paying close attention. They'll work through the end of construction of the project, and their fee is twenty thousand dollars, so, that's what I will have as a recommendation at the next meeting. I wanted to see if there's any questions, concerns, comments, before it gets in front of you for a motion, so I can be prepared on that.
Is that, is that a pretty standard fee, or?
Yeah, I think the, the one for the sewer project maybe was a little bit less, but it's based on an hourly fee with, you know, this is the expected amount, but it could go up to that. This is just, knowing that there's already a grant in place, probably a percentage, so, yeah, that's a relatively standard fee.
Um, okay. Uh, county commission reports, um, start on the left today. Commissioner Bogner?
Don't really have a lot to say. I've attended a meeting or two in some of the holiday festivities, uh, but, uh, nothing in those type of deals that I think needs to be brought up before the rest of the, the board, other than, I hope you all had a Merry Christmas.
Mr. Parks?
I don't have a whole lot either, other than on the fourth, I think it's next Thursday, there'll be a conservation breakfast, I plan on attending that. Beyond that, we'll see what the new year holds, for things to get involved in, so, there's plenty.
Mr. Hurst?
Yeah, I think, uh, one, Conservation District's one of those we talked about quite considerably during our- Well, thank, I forgot it this time, I was doing too good. Uh, Conservation District's one of those extra agencies, outside agencies, so I think it's important, if we can get there, to get there to that meeting, that way you get an opportunity to ask questions and, and, uh, get some answers, so, that's the other thing, and January, uh, January twelfth, K nine six corridor, and at that meeting, that's down at Haven at noon, to the, uh, Haven Community Center, and, uh, there's a couple mayors were involved in Kansas Leadership Program, uh, regarding rural communities, smaller rural communities, and I think there's going to be a discussion or presentation with regard to, uh, of, uh, challenges and opportunities on smaller rural communities there at that day, uh, from some people who've been involved in the Kansas Rural Leadership Program. The other thing that's been brought to my attention is that if you happen to own property, uh, within a school district, and that school district has passed a bond that you're not in favor of, and if you think you can get anywhere with regard to protesting your, your ad valorem taxes on that property, just due to the school bond, that's not a valid reason to support, to protest your, your, uh, taxes on that property, and, uh, uh, that time to do that is, is when the, uh, school board and school is considering a bond that you're, because you own property in there, you're going to help pay for. Uh, the time to do that is to go see the, the school board and to talk about it then, because if you've got a reason, valid reason, or think you ha- even think you have a valid reason for your property valuation done by the appraisal, then by all means, take your pictures, do your research, and protest them. But, and, and that's a, certainly a good, valid reason to protest it, if you think your property has been overvalued compared to, to, uh, what you think it should be, then do that, but not just because the school bond voted to, to a school bond. Uh, that, that's not a reason, and, and it's a waste of your time. Thank you, that's it.
Mr. Weitzel?
Um, so, a couple of things, um, the Reno County Central Committee, um, met this week to appoint a new treasurer, our treasurer, Brenda, um, is retiring for, for good reason, she came by the meeting and, and talked to a lot of us, um, and so, um, we, we did appoint her, her replacement, which is the, um, the current deputy treasurer, was who we appointed. Um, so it was, it was a close vote, but, um, in the end, that was, that was who the, the central committee appointed. Um, the Reno County Central Republican Committee also, um, passed a thirty by thirty resolution as well. Um, so that will go into the, um, the pile of, uh, these things, and hopefully, um, some other groups will do so as well. I've got to send some chamber, uh, meetings this past couple of weeks, enjoy Christmas with the family, and want to remind everybody to, to be careful, um, over the next week, um, unfortunately, as, as much as, as, while enforcement tries, there are going to be junk drivers on the road on New Year's Eve. Um, and so stay off the roads if you can, if you can't, uh, definitely make sure you're driving sober and awake and alert, because, you know, sometimes you got to watch out for the other guy. But I, I wish everybody a Happy New Year, and we'll, we'll get at it again next year.
Thank you, commissioners, uh, I don't have much, I, Commissioner Bogner?
Thought that occurred, I know Randy stated that he, he had, uh, was planning on going to the uh, breakfast meeting with the Conservation District. I put in my, uh, RSVP yesterday, so if there's anybody else, I guess protocol would be to send out a message that we may have a quorum, isn't that what we do?
Yeah, we put out the notice to the public, to let them know the quorum may be present.
It was shaped, I, have you already done that? Maybe I missed it.
All set in the corner.
So who's all going? Um, you two, Commissioner Hurst, you know, okay, I, um, I'm, yeah, I'm getting there. Um, so, yeah, we'll have a quorum there at least, so, um, okay, um, so, following on the, the points of the treasurer's office, I think, um, Randy, if you could extend an invitation to our new treasurer, Calvert, is that right? To, uh, just come and say hello to the commission and, um, that would be great, I know she's been here a time or two, but, um, we, I think it would be appropriate to officially congratulate her and, and, um, let the people know who our new treasurer is. Um, so, we'll do that next meeting. Um, uh, along with that, um, I think, uh, Commissioner Weitzel, uh, mentioned, uh, you know, the appreciation of, of all of Reno County in this commission, um, Brenda was unable to be here today, but she does have a retirement party this Friday at the annex from two to four. Um, we'll also be, uh, presenting this plaque to her at, at that time, if she doesn't, pick it up sooner, but, um, it's, uh, says sincere, sincere appreciation for your dedicated years of service representing Reno County in the treasurer's office, so, um, on behalf of all of Reno County, we, um, extend our thanks and gratitude for her service. So, I don't think we have anything else, our next meeting is in two weeks, um, tent? Okay, um, so we're, we're done early, Commissioner Hurst?
Uh, if I'm correct, uh, Local Government Day is on the twenty-fourth, is that, which would be on our second meeting day? Is that something that we need to look at with regards to that, twenty-fourth? If we're, if, if that's, if that is a time that we will want to be in Topeka, visiting of the legislature, just-
The twenty-fourth? What day is that, sir? Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Is that in, is that an evening thing?
It's a daytime, Tuesday.
Okay, so you want to, that's just, uh-
Check and make sure that, that it's something, if we were going to attend, we would want to look at changing our meeting date. If it's something we don't want to attend, then it's okay, but I just bring that point out, is it something that we need to attend as much as possible in Topeka?
Well, I actually, um, will likely be gone on the twenty-fourth, so, um, that doesn't mean you guys can't meet, but there'll be one less member here, if we want to, just go to the Capitol, Commissioner Bogner?
I'm not going to be available that day either, I told Randy here quite a while back that
Okay.
We're taking a little trip.
All right.
Family members, and we'll be in Hawaii, I don't think it'll work to, to, to e- even be remotely available that day.
Well, we can just call, we can just call you.
Go ahead. It's your time.
Um, so, maybe, Randy, let's think through that, um, that does make some sense. We could send a couple commissioners and you could go to Topeka, and we could just front-load or back-load the, the, the meetings, if there's anything we have to get done on the twenty-fourth or have a different date.
Okay, also, if you do cancel that one, if there's not enough commissioners, you meet on the thirty-first, the fifth-
Okay.
Wednesday, so you could just move it back a week.
Okay. All right, well, we'll, we'll get some calendar, calendaring together, so appreciate that, um, unless there's other, uh, business, um, we'll adjourn the meeting today, thank you.